Just waiting for a green light. Here we go. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, November 4th, 2013 of the Edina City Council, leading of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Bennerup.
Member Bennett.
Here.
Member Sprague.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us. Is there anyone that wishes to make a motion on the meeting agenda, the form of meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second, to adopt the meeting agenda as shown. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carry. Next, we have a number of items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
How would your honor?
Yes, your honor, I would like to remove 4N, please.
4N is a Nancy. All right.
B, please, your honor.
Which was?
B, payment of claims.
All right. Any others? With the exception of 4B and 4N, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve the balance of the consent agenda, except for 4B and 4N. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carry. And now, with respect to 4B, Member Sprague.
Yes, I have a question. There's a resurfaced tennis court in the General Journal, 13,00920. I was just wondering which court that was. Do you recall?
Which page of it is it?
This is on page 22, item four, from the top.
Councilmember Sprague, members of the city council, that's Garden Park.
That's Garden Park?
Garden.
Okay. That's all, your honor.
All right, good. You want to move the matter?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second, to adopt 4B, which is the payment of claims. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carry. And then down to 4N, which is the proposed amendment to the Minneapolis Water Agreement. Member Bennett.
Thank you, your honor. In addition to the material that's before us this evening, there is a reference on page seven, under the notices article, that's Article nine, and it directs notice to Edina to be sent to Wayne Hoole, Director of Engineering and Public Works, and I recommend that that be updated to read simply Director of Public Works, and then it's not tied to a specific person, but to the office.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And that's a motion to approve the item as well?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's the way you would like it, I would second that.
You're the mover.
Okay, yes, I'll make a motion.
All right, good. You're moving the entire 4N.
Yes.
With the change as noted on page seven. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carry. And then, on to special recognitions and presentations. Member Swenson.
Hi. Could I have Dick Rackett and Barbara Laveler step forward and give your presentations, and then I'll come down and we'll have a song and dance?
I'm not supposed to push this?
No, it's on.
Well, good evening, Mayor Hovland and members of the city council. I am really thrilled to be here tonight with a whole host of people from Edina who live and work in Edina and who love the sculpture Spalding. And we're here tonight to present the sculpture by Heidi Hoy to the city of Edina, and I think that what I really want to communicate is that, thanks to your urging, we've become more entrepreneurial in our methods of how we can have a public art as part of what makes Edina great. This is a wonderful example of that. It's the first of many, I promise you. Dick?
Thank you, Barbara.
My name is Dick Rackett. I'm Executive Director of the Edina Community Foundation, and I'm very pleased, tonight, on behalf of the foundation, to present to the city of Edina our gift of the Spalding sculpture by artist Heidi Hoy. This gift is made possible by the contributions of many Edina residents who voted with their dollars to save Spalding at his home in front of Salu Restaurant. He may well be the most popular of more than 70 sculptures that the Edina Public Art Committee has exhibited over the past eight years at Grandview Square Park, at the Promenade, and more recently at 50th and France. Over $2,000 of the $7,650 purchase price came from donors of $50 or less, in a fund drive led by city councilmember Ann Swenson and Edina Public Art Committee Chair Barbara Laveler, Salu Restaurant and its parent corporation, Parisoli Restaurant Holdings, and the Edina Lions Club. These included some 20 gifts of $5 to $100 from named donors, and almost $1,000 from anonymous donors to several gift jars in the 50th and France neighborhood. We also received contributions of $500 or more from Doug and Sharon Pugh, Peregrine Capital Management, Rebecca Polad, Elaine Pacey Erk, who's here tonight, Jerry and Lisa O'Brien, Warren and Mary Lynn Staley, the Edina Lions Club, and Parisoli Restaurants. The Edina Community Foundation has welcomed this opportunity to serve as a charitable giving partner for this great campaign, and we're now ready to have the city of Edina take its place as the permanent owner of Spalding. Congratulations.
All right, yeah. Yeah, let's get Spalding up there.
So really, what makes this story great is the Lions Club came to me last spring and said they wanted to come back to Edina and start fundraising. So Larry and Leroy, will you get up here, and we'll all join. And then, at that same time that you said that, I was in eating restaurant in Parisoli. So Ellen and Don are here from Parisoli, but it's Kip, and it's Zach, and it's Phil Roberts who helped do it. So will you guys come up here? And we had a great dinner, and Barbara was there, and Dick was there. Well, so will you stand up? And Bill, you're part of the air committee, will you stand up? And during that dinner, we were all giving part, 10% of what we ate that night to Spalding, and Pacey was there. So Pacey, come on up and join us. And Sue, come on up and join us. And it really snowballed into that. But what really makes it great, and I'm glad to see all these kids here, is that the reason that we all enjoyed doing it is that we love watching the kids walk by the dog, and they touch that dog on the head. And the Pugh family's been significant, but I don't think they were able to join us. And Dick mentioned some of the other people that gave, but really, it was that five, and 10, and 20, and even the dollars and the dunk tank up at 50th when it's freezing cold. And so, this is to the city, and I'm very proud to have participated in it, and this is what makes my job fun. So, thank you.
I think Spalding wants to have a word to this and say thank you.
So, and he's up on the pictures right now. Yes, so thank you much. Thank you, all of you. And we'll do it again. We'll just pick another one.
Thanks, everybody. It was really quite an effort. Thank you. All right, Pacey. See ya at Braemar. Or the Dome. I want to really thank Member Swenson, along with Barbara Laveler and the Edina Community Foundation, for a job superbly done. The most recognized pet in Edina, I'm sure.
Well, the most obedient, too, I would also say that. The other thing is, we did raise actually more than the cost of the dog. So that money has gone, and it's being held right now for the Edina Public Art Committee to be used for future acquisitions. So that's pretty exciting.
That's good. I think if memory serves me right, it's an extra $2,500 or so.
It is.
Other good thing is, we can count on it not getting attacked by coyotes.
That's true. Another good point.
Now, we've got some folks that were here earlier. All the scouts from PAC 168, want to put your hands in the air and wave to the council. All right, thanks for coming. We got the tigers, the wolves, and the cub dens here. So, thanks for coming, and I hope you got a good tour of City Hall. And we'll look forward to seeing you out in the audience, as long as you can deal with it. Or your parents and scoutmasters can deal with it. So, thanks for coming to City Hall this evening. Next thing on the agenda is community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and address the council with regard to a matter that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the reports and recommendations portion. And the first matter there is a Resolution 2013-109 that deals with Spalding in part. So is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second, for adopting Resolution 2013-109, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina. We have to do that by state law. And any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carry. So, part of this, the donors' names, we've posted on our city website, but for the public art in Edina, the Edina Community Foundation, the cost of the Spalding sculpture is $7,650. And the Edina Arts Center also got a nice generous grant from the 50th and France Business Association for $1,500. Everybody else's name, as well as theirs, will be shown on the website fairly soon. So, thank you to all of those individuals and organizations. Next, we have sketch plan review for a proposed project involving Think Bank, which is an existing corporate resident of our community. And Director Teague, you have this matter. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a site I think you're all familiar with, at 6725 York Avenue, better known as the Szechuan Star Site. It's located on the Promenade and Hazelton Avenue. It's just east of the Byerly's Redevelopment Site. The existing restaurant is sat vacant for a number of years now. So before you is a -- they originally presented three site plan alternatives to the Planning Commission, and as a result of the Planning Commission discussion, they've created a fourth based on their recommendations. So what they're proposing here is a two-story bank, would be about 8,400 square feet in size. This is a rendering of what the building would look like. Just to take you through a few more renderings, you can see a rooftop dining, or kind of a lunch patio for employees, that would overlook the Promenade. It would also include a drive-through facility, which is a permitted use. The proposed use here is permitted within this zoning district. So to quickly go through the three alternatives that were presented to the Planning Commission, this is a look at the first one. The area that's highlighted in the red dashed lines, that's the required setbacks on the site, essentially 50 feet from all lot lines. And so on this first proposal, the building would be located up in the northwest corner. The area shaded in yellow would be area that would require a variance for this particular plan. Parking would be located along the Promenade, and the drive-through would circulate in this fashion here. They'd make the quick left turn, and then out this way. The second plan is a code-compliant plan. This meets all of our minimum zoning ordinance requirement, in terms of number of parking spaces and building setback. So this is a plan that they're more or less entitled to. It meets all of our code requirements. Large parking field along Hazelton Road, and then again, parking field along the Promenade, and the drive-through circulation roughly the same as the previous plan. The third plan is, the building is located in the same location as the Plan A, however, the drive-through would be straight in and out this way. This is a configuration that the bank isn't real crazy about. They prefer the side, cars with their sides to the building. So based on the Planning Commission comments, they had suggested that the building be pulled up closer to Hazelton Road and closer to the Promenade. They'd like to see the parking field on the west side of the building. They wanted to see the landscaping beefed up from those three plans, and then provide connections to the Promenade. So Option D is the result of those plans, and you can see the building pulled up toward Hazelton Road and on the Promenade. Again, the area highlighted in yellow would require variance to the setbacks. The parking field would be on the west side of the building. They've beefed up the landscaping along the lot lines here, and the drive-through would be similar to options, I believe it was A and B, with the side load. So with that, again, this is a sketch plan review, where the council is just asked to provide non-binding comments to the applicant, and as a result of the comments, both from Planning Commission and the city council, they would then come back with the formal application for a site plan and potentially variances. With that, Jeff Flipson is here from the architecture firm that's representing Think Bank. Otherwise, I could stand for any questions.
I think we've got a couple of questions. Member Bennett had one, then Member Swenson.
Thank you. Director Teague, what is the setback from the Promenade proposed with new Option D?
Let's see. 20 feet. Thank you for the help.
Okay, so the bank building would be 20 feet back from the Promenade?
Correct.
A little difficult to read the faint writing. Okay, and what is the width of the building, measured from west to east?
Yeah, I don't know that one off the top of my head. I'm sure the applicant would.
I can wait for that one as well. Then my last question, I think, for you, is, is that cut-in element on the parking side, so the west side, understanding that a design purpose, does it serve, is it a required purpose, that there be that indentation with the corner a little closer to the parking on the west, a little farther west, and then an indent of the building a little to the east? Is that required?
That wouldn't be a requirement, no.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Swenson.
I assume the dashed parking lines in the island with the four trees that look like little umbrella tops, are those proof of parking?
Correct, yeah. I didn't mention that. That was another recommendation of the Planning Commission, was to not overpark the site, or at least provide parking.
Right, I wrote that in the minutes.
Right.
And then, I'm going to want to know what the drive aisle is with exiting, going south from the auto bank?
Code-wise, being that it's a one-way, the width requirement is 14 feet.
Because right now, it's 30 feet, I think. Okay, so code says 14. But if it's 14, and we have to put parking on that westerly side of it. If you look at the drive aisle exit, you're right, and the proof of parking, if we had to put in proof of parking, would it not be wide enough, then, to pull out of?
As long as there's at least 14 feet, that would be the code requirement, subject to review by engineering. If they would have some concerns, maybe we would want to widen that.
And I'll hold all my other comments until I've heard from the proponent.
Other questions for Director Teague? All right. Did you happen to prepare a compliance table with respect to Option D? Goes to Member Bennett's question about the setback of the building on the east side.
Yeah, I didn't.
I see A through C, but of course, D came in late, between Planning Commission meeting and our meeting.
Correct. I didn't prepare a compliance table, but the areas that are highlighted in yellow, those would be the variances required? And again, this would be from 30 feet, or from 50 feet to 20 feet along the Promenade. And this is about a seven or eight-foot encroachment into the setbacks. That would be about 40, 42 feet. So those would be the two variances. And then the proof of parking, that would require a variance also.
Okay. So on the east side, the city standard for PCD3 is 50 feet, and they'd be at 20 feet.
Correct.
30-foot variance. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? That prompt any other questions for folks? All right, Mr. Flipson? Welcome.
Mayor Hovland, members of the council, my name is Jeff Flipson with HTG Architects. Our address is 9300 Hennepin Town Road, Eden Prairie. And everything Carrie explained is basically what we agree with. On this one, I'm not sure if you can see it. We would bring the colored elevation, or colored site plan, for your review, so you can kind of see a little bit more of where the green space is. The Planning Commission, you know, we came in with Option B as saying that's complies. And so, in our discussion with Planning Commission, their general thought was, is to push the building closer to Hazelton, which works better with some of the city thoughts for Hazelton Road. And if you notice, along the left side, here is the line for the new apartment building that's being built. So they thought that was a good idea. They also felt putting the parking along the west side away from the Promenade was the right reason. So we are encroaching on the setbacks, and, but really, this plan evolved from Planning Commission. A couple of the questions, yes, the building is 20 feet back from the setback, or the property line on the east side. The parking setback on the east property line is actually 10, but we're at 20 feet. And from one of the earlier questions, the exit driveline here is 20 feet wide, and the thought of, again, the Planning Commission had said they didn't think we needed that. We don't believe we need all the parking, the 42 stalls that are required either. So we're okay with this. But even if more parking would occur, whether it's along the east side here or along the south, if it's on the east side, that will be employee parking, so I believe the 20 feet would be fine. If we had to go to a 24-foot width driveline for that parking there, we would do it, if needed, if the council and the commission would like to see that. Other than that, I guess I'm here to answer questions and get your feedback on this facility. Think Bank has been in town, I believe it's 18 years. As you know, they're on France Avenue right now. This is one of their prototype buildings. They have multiple buildings in the state, Eagan, Apple Valley, Rochester, that are, this is their prototype design. So I'll open it up. Any questions?
Sure. Questions for Mr. Flipson. Member Sprague.
Just a question about the location of the trash enclosure. Why couldn't that be up, notched into the building, or somehow closer in, just because of the various movements that will happen to the trash as well?
Well, we actually made a trash room in the building, right at the southeast corner. You don't see it on this plan, so this plan is a little bit dated. The challenge with it here is, when the trash service comes up, they'll have to go head-on, and then they'll basically have to back out, because we don't want them driving around the canopy, because they could clip the corner of the drive-up canopy. But you are correct. That trash, we've moved inside the building now. And they can either roll it, the trash company can either roll it down to this corner, or they'll have to come up there and go head-on into the building.
Well, I'd rather the trash go away. I don't want to see it in that corner. So I want the drive. I like the reconfiguration with the parking away from the Promenade, and I like the proof-of-parking concept. I want the exit drive-out from the auto banking part to be as narrow as possible.
Okay.
If we're going to try to preserve as much green space, part of that is on road widths, and if it's a one-way, and you can live with 14 feet, I would rather that it be 14 or 15 feet than 20 feet. I know that when we get down to the south, it has to stay wide to a certain extent, because the entrance is two-way, and you need some, but I guess I'm not, are we talking about a two-story plan at this point, or one-story and one spaces?
Technically, one and a half.
One and a half?
Yes.
So one story and one, some places two and another. Will we have a green roof, as we saw with seating in it, or was that just?
This is a more current 3D rendering, where you can see the Promenade along the back. This is the access drive coming into this site, and Byerly's parking on this site. So the patio, the rooftop patio, will still be there.
Okay, and is your second floor a working second floor?
Yes, they will have, well, yes.
And will you have windows on the Promenade side of that building?
Yes.
Because that's what I would expect you would have, so that I wouldn't be looking at a brick two-story wall?
Correct.
Okay, and I noticed in that particular color rendering, Think is blue, but we lost the orange. Would that be?
No, the rendering, again, given printer quality, with this image here, this is the actual building that is in Eagan, and so this material here is a clay tile, well, called a water screen. And so, this, the colors you're seeing here is what will be on the Edina facility.
Okay, and Carrie, our signage, would we allow a giant Think sign freestanding like that?
There would be a lot of freestanding sign. I don't know the size of that one, but they'd be required to meet all of our.
Okay, well, my only concern is, not that they shouldn't have signage, and I'm not going to say that, but we have a new roundabout going in there, and we have pedestrian crossing right on the other side of that roundabout that is the Promenade. So careful consideration would have to be made. I need, you know, I read the minutes of Planning Commission, and Michael Shorter, I think, is the one that said, if we move the building up towards this end, it will be more visible, and Byerly's won't block it as much. And I think that's good and accurate, so it will be easy to find. But I also want it to stay safe crossing right there, which is, you know, kind of a scary crossing now. Maybe the roundabout to the west will help. But we'd have to have careful consideration where their signage is, and how giant it is, and how high up it goes.
Councilmember Swenson, I believe, if I'm accurate, I believe the ordinance calls for a 20-foot sign. Carrie, is that right? A pylon. And if you look at this rendering, it's, at this angle's not great, but just over there, if we put a, again, we'll confirm if we are allowed that pylon sign. The one you saw in the actual picture is bigger than what would be here, and I think 20 feet is the height, and it would be on the east side of the property. So it'll be as far away from the roundabout as possible.
And that's fine, but what I'm telling you is, right behind that sign is a bike and pedestrian crossing on that road. And we do have people that use it.
Okay.
And there is no light there, so it's a blinking something that hopefully, as you try to race across, no one hits you. It's not, it's the best we can do for trying to cross a road like that, but I need, you know, your building will sort of block it a little bit. I don't want your sign to block it, I guess, is what I'm concerned about.
Thank you. Member Brindle, comments?
Thank you. All right, I'm comparing what we're seeing with some of the colored documents, the pictures that we have here, and looking at page A14, which is Option B, it shows a green roof, and we talked about that very briefly a second ago. Does Option D feature the same green roof?
I'm sorry, none of them have a green roof. They just all would have the patio on the roof. So none of them will have an actual green roof.
Okay, so what I'm seeing, an Option B that actually looks like it's planted and with little plants sticking up?
Those are tables in it, and the green roof, you are correct, in Option B, it was green-looking, but it's more conducive to what you're going to see on this, that I'm pointing to on the plant. Typical, either, this will probably be an EPDM roof, but with the patio on top of that, little plaza.
Well, sure looks like plants to me in this picture.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Zooming in, yes, those would be just potted plants, not truly planted in the roof. So those would be like potted plants around the edge of the patio to, you know, because it's kind of a boundary. I'm sorry, you are correct there. I noticed that. Yes.
All right.
Member Brindle, I'm just looking at what you're looking at, and that's confusing as well, because on B, down below, on the ground, they have little green circles. Those aren't potted plants, those are landscaping. And then up top, they replicate the same icon. So it looks like a green roof, with little green plantings along the border there, which would be an improvement.
Okay, well.
It shows the same thing on A13.
Yep.
In fact, I was thinking it was a green roof as well.
I would be a proponent of a green roof. So if that were in your list of items, I would appreciate it. Looking at the comparison of these, my, the main concern that I have is, well, I'll back up. And I appreciate that you have given us a variety And I appreciate that you have given us a variety of options. And that has come from listening to people, which clearly you are doing. One of the things that we have asked for through the planning commission and through our telepathy, because you're hearing us, is that we, walking along the promenade, don't necessarily want to walk past a parking lot full of cars. However, in looking at these options, what I find is when you move the parking, the attractiveness of the building moves with the parking. So along the promenade, we end up with the back of the building and an emergency door. So there isn't access to the promenade for your employees and for staff or customers. They have to walk out and around. So, you know, I understand that moving the mechanics of parking to the other side might be more attractive for us, we think. But I look at Centennial Lakes. We thought, the planners at that time thought that putting the parking away from the park was going to be better. And what we have against the park is the back of all the buildings. There's not a window in the place. And there's no access for people who shop or dine directly to the park. So I would encourage you to think about that and just make that backside of the bank as attractive as the front, if possible. Just because we really want to embrace the promenade and we want the promenade to embrace the building. And so where those two can work together, I think it would be nice. I agree that 40-some parking places seems excessive for a building like this. With two stories or one and a half stories, what's going to be on the first floor? What's going to be on the second floor?
On the first floor, it'll be the typical banking areas. Lobby, waiting, teller area, transaction areas, and offices. On the second floor, what they'll have is a community room that obviously the community can use throughout the day and the week and the month, that can handle probably 20 people. But it will also be for employee lounge, for mechanical, and some real basic storage space and toilet facilities.
Okay.
On the upper level.
So when would that community room be available?
Well, it'll have to, through Think Mutual Bank, they will have, if they have customers that want to use it. And if there's an association in the community that says, hey, we'd like to use your space, I think somebody from Think would have to be there.
Sure.
And they'll have to work out the details there on how much they are going to allow for that community room or business center, they can call it, too. So it, again, it's not nearly as large as this, but it's a small room that, you know, people could use from time to time.
All right. Good. Let's see here.
And the, in regards to your, the east face, I was, apologize, I was digging through as you were talking. I thought I had an image of that east elevation for you to see. If you look at, it's, maybe this is just a quick one to look at. If you see this side where you've got windows, there's going to be, it's not a tile wall. There is windows on that side. So it isn't, this building was designed, you know, back in 2008, the prototype, to have four sides, you know, four good sides. And so I believe we'll be satisfying you on that standpoint for that east side.
All right. I echo the concerns stated earlier about the location in option D as in David of the location of the trash enclosure. It just, I mean, aside from the fact that it's by the promenade, it just looked like to me that the garbage truck was going to create a traffic hazard getting in and out. And I wasn't sure how, once the truck got in there, if it had to back out or how it was going to get out. So, so that what you're saying is that the trash enclosure is no longer in the corner where it's depicted in option D.
Correct. It will be inside the building.
It'll be inside the building. And then, so will it be a full-size garbage truck that comes in here?
It will have to be. And that's why, one of the comments earlier to reduce this driveline from 20 feet down to 14, we may have to compromise. And if the, the truck comes in and goes towards the corner of the building, they may have to be able to back up, turn around. And so we may have to have that more like 16 feet just to allow for that, the garbage truck to maneuver through there.
Now, what time of day does it come? Do you know?
I'm not sure. Well, I don't know the answer to that. I'm sorry.
That is a challenge. And the other piece is the electrical. On options A, B, and C, it was over on the west side of the drawing, and it's now on the east side of the drawing between the building and the promenade. So I would like to see that located somewhere where it's not as conspicuous. And I will leave that to your designer eye, but I don't want to see it between the building and the promenade.
Okay.
Okay? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Bennett?
He may. Do you have any other comments? No, I'm just, I'm just having a sidebar here about the trade-offs in this design because they say, you know, Hazelton is the primary street to address. And then the trade-off is you get the backside of the building on the promenade. So one of three, two of three sides are going to suffer for choosing the primary. The Hazelton side has, will have the most commercial foot and car traffic, people coming to and fro. But the aesthetic on the promenade side, to me, is pretty important as well. So it's hard to know which way to turn it. There's an immediate trade-off. In Byerly's, we asked them to address the promenade in France. And then Hazelton, the mayor and I tried to have some commentary about getting that facade, you know, cleaned up. So is the promenade, we want that to be, I don't want to say the worst side, but the least aesthetically strong side? Or do we want that to be the road going into Byerly's where there's a lot of traffic? And I don't know.
In other words, simply pulling up, the shortening of the setback doesn't equal necessarily the kind of address that you want.
That's another way to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a rhetorical question for y'all.
You know, the one thing we also didn't talk about is the pedestrian. So in most of your other ones, A, B, and C, you show a sidewalk connecting to the promenade. Our expectation is that there will be one somewhere where it makes sense in whatever design you come up with. The other one, in the current D, you show a north-south spine of a sidewalk from in front of the building and that kind of circular patio down through the proof-of-parking area. But it really doesn't connect out to the apartments. It doesn't. And whenever we build something like this, we always want to look at what is it next to, what should it connect to?
Permeability.
So if I live in one of those three apartment buildings and I want to walk to Think Bank because it would be dumb to get in my car and drive a quarter of a block, you know, how do I do that when there's a snowbank? You know, how do, and that really, and this is going to be, the access road in is going to be busy. So I want, I want to see in the final plan sidewalks connecting to all of the sidewalks that are planned in the Byerly's project so that you can, your, your employees can walk over to Byerly's to get a sandwich and the apartment and Byerly's employees, cat and livers, can come to your bank.
There's a, on perspectives, option B, I don't know if you have that up there.
If you want to look at this perspective?
Okay.
This one answers a couple of questions, Councilmember Brindles, is this is showing the east side. And we've taken the glass that's along the north, wrapping it around the east. We've wrapped the metal around the backside. So that's a visual of it. And again, this is still conceptual in nature, so if we need to add more windows, more glazing. The other portions over on this side where you don't see the windows are where there's mechanical storage rooms. And so we didn't feel like there was a need for windows at that point. Regarding the sidewalks, the sidewalk that's along Hazelton today stops right here. And we will be adding sidewalk all the way down from the little plaza here. Again, the plaza's diagrammatic at this stage. It would come out to here. Now, I'm not sure what's happened. You know, I see it over here, but the idea is we would connect if there was a crossing there.
Totally.
Also, going down here, the same thing. If there's a crossing going over towards Byerly's, you know, we'll for sure be connecting there. And I think this rendering, I apologize, doesn't show up. You can bear, you can't see it, but there, the plan is a sidewalk right along the south property line that you saw in option D's.
Yep.
So we're doing our best. I'm not sure which one of you said it. There are pros and cons with our original option B that we felt, dealing with Carrie and Wayne, who that, you know, we wanted to do an option that complied. And then in that discussion, they felt that planning might want to see it differently. And so that's how this one evolved. And so I hear you. I understand the concerns about parking on one side or the other.
Do you have perspectives, option B? It's in our packet. It shows the sidewalk and the building.
I apologize. I'm not sure if it's here. No, I can have it right here.
I can give you my marked-up copy to show, but.
Sure. Sure.
About A13?
Yeah.
A15, too, is a B.
See, when I look at the aesthetics on the promenade side there and Hazelton, to me, it's a better pairing. The sidewalk, sidewalks are closer, there's more connections to the actual activity centers and entrances of the building. So to me, to me, I feel like this is maybe a stronger plan. I understand planning went a different direction. But, and then if you go back to the one you just had again and look at the difference on the promenade side, I mean, it's pretty, pretty strong.
I think, very interesting discussion, and it's obvious that you're trying to be really responsive and appreciate that, you know, responsive to staff concerns, responsive to planning commission concerns and those this evening. But there are trade-offs. And the building orientation alone or where it sits on the site doesn't determine how people are going to access it. So in this, at this point, with not a, not a sea of green, it's nice green space, and actually, that's something I'd like to discuss a little bit more. But people are going to have to come around the building to a point of entry.
Right.
And we know from discussions, things like pharmacies and banks probably don't have multiple entrances for very good reasons. And so is that entrance in the logical place? Is it in the best place? And does it end up making the building, making the entrance kind of isolated and, in fact, having more people drive than might walk up to it because they don't see how they're going to access it conveniently?
Go back to perspective B again?
Yeah, but B's an island practically.
But to her point in the front, I mean, I just see more permeability for the pedestrian in the site. And there's more connections up to the entrance, and the architecture's good on the Hazelton promenade side. So it's, again, it's a trade-off of which side do you want to try to?
But there's also row of parking that you can't even see on that east side of the building if you look on the plan. You know, that's right, but right along there, there's a whole row of parking there. You've got way wider asphalt in that plan than you realize just by looking at the picture.
Oh, that's not in the, yeah, okay.
So you're getting kind of a skewed view of what it looks like. And again, we talk about not putting a building in an island of parking. Sometimes that's, I don't know.
Yeah, you want, you want it up in the corner, but, you know, I'm just, I'm struggling with the, I guess, you've marked some sidewalks up. I would like to see permeability for the pedestrian in the site to Member Bennett's point about having multiple ways to get in and around. And also, the architecture on that, on that promenade side, to me, is, is not quite where it needs to be.
I'd agree.
Something else I think we need to be careful about is that the promenade is only 80 feet wide. How high, how tall? I know it's two stories, but what's the height?
The parapet on the low portion is 16 feet on the single story, and on the two stories, approximately 28 to 30 feet. And that would be along the promenade and the north side of the building.
So 28 to 30 feet along those two sides?
Yes.
Okay. So then there is a little bit more balance because even under, under one part of our code, height was determined by setbacks. But I think we want to be careful that we're not making some kind of canyon or alley feel with the promenade. From one of the small numbers on the design, it looked like the setback was only 10 feet. I'm relieved to hear that it's 20 feet. And also that the building height itself will be lower, so at least there won't be that feeling of being kind of in a building canyon. But looking, if you can juxtapose, is it possible to juxtapose the two side by side? I mean, one notable thing is the reduction kind of of open and greens. Yeah, okay. So it's, it's open space with the other design. It's not green space. The green space, then, is actually along the access road. And I think, do we have general agreement that the green space along the access road is kind of wasted? And I think that's the feedback that you got from the planning commission.
Correct.
You don't, it would be way better to combine that over on the east with the promenade.
And then, and then on that, that sketch on the right where it was notched in, that was a nice way to break up that plane as well on that side, on the promenade side. Just maybe not like that, but just breaking, breaking it up so it's not so monolithic.
Just, it's a single plane you want to break up.
Right. And then, and Member Bennett's saying, and then add beef up the green on that side. Maybe you can do that when you're undulating the wall in and out.
It's obviously thoughtful design and stuff like the plaza. That's a nice little plaza. I don't know with, with the single purpose of the building, I don't know that you'll get the kind of use that you would get, for instance, with Whole Foods or, you know, something selling food, either meals. The other thing is where, depending on the location of the bus stop, then I think it probably would be useful to look at function. For instance, do you trade out a plaza for a green roof? If the plaza really isn't going to be used and the green roof would benefit and have a general environmental benefit, plaza benefit for higher buildings in the area for their visual, but also help us with our stormwater, then, you know, can there be a trade-off that direction, understanding that you have the right to build without any variances or special permissions? And so trying to, to keep that in mind as well.
I think, remember, you wanted.
You wanted the plaza and the green roof?
There was a discussion about the two stories versus, at one point, this was planned as a single story. But because being next to the apartments, which I think to the west is six stories? Or seven? Having a second story on this building, they felt there was a general step down versus dropping way down. So it is all good, very good comments. The plaza up here really is just to create a nicer visual as people are coming around the roundabout. Hopefully, they're watching traffic, not the building, but that's the idea. So all good comments. I guess we'll have to work with staff on, you know, I, because we are hearing two different things between planning and council, and we want to try to make everybody happy somehow, some way.
I don't think you're, I don't think you're hearing a total dis of option D. I just think you're hearing a discussion about how the building should look from the promenade and some things like that. I, at least, I'll tell you, for me, you're not, I'm not dissing D. I'm in favor of D as long as I like the way the building looks from the promenade.
Okay.
Yeah.
Member Brindle, you had one other issue you wanted to comment on.
Yeah. I think that people are going to drive to this bank, they're going to walk to this bank, and they're, and they're going to ride their bike to this bank. So where is the bike rack?
There is a bike rack. It's not shown here. But on all of their prototypes, that was critical. They do have a bike rack, yes.
All right.
I think statistics show, as you probably all know in banking, if somebody's coming to do a transaction, 60% of the people are going to be coming to use the drive-up, which means I would, I don't know, I apologize, I don't know the number of people that are using the promenade throughout the day, throughout the week, evenings, weekends. But I have to believe, you know, we wanted to try to tie this, soften or buffer the paving with promenade. But I do have to believe that the majority of the people going into this building will be coming from either the apartments or from cars that are parking in the parking lot.
I think then you may.
I think then you may have, there may be an issue. We're all seeing, seeing things differently, and also, it's very helpful to have these drawings available, which we didn't have in this form in our packet. But ATM location's going to be important. So that entrance from the south, I guess, again, I'm questioning, you want some presence and access from the north. You need more, I think, from the south and from the east than it looks like you're going to have conveniently. And I understand where you want to have the drive through located, but at this point, it starts to almost look like a barrier. Whereas with option B, when you had that entrance facing east, I'm not setting off the two, but I'm just saying again that there are elements in the trade off because you can more easily see how you're going to walk from the promenade, promenade from the south, from the east to the entrance to the bank when it faces the promenade and it's still convenient to the parking. Then you now see it when it's pulled around the building. You have to cross the drive lanes of an auto bank to get there. So there are trade offs.
Yep, you are correct.
The other thing that I see is when the garbage truck comes in, they can come in and make a loop with option B where they can't in option D. That I think is important because that's one of the biggest vehicles that's going to come through there.
Often does it come?
Weekly, I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that. I apologize. I'm, if the option B, the hard part is a truck trying to go around this bypass could clip that. So if, that's why we're rationale of head on here, they could back up and leave. I know in some of our financial institutions, they have requirements that it has to be before or after banking hours. And so I'm not sure if the city of Adine allows that, but many of our clients, we specialize in bank designs, will require that those types of services are done before hours.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
All right. I'll give you my comments still. So you've got a full array of things to either help you or confuse you. I agree with the, I thought Chair Staunton gave you a good summary, and I think many of the, my colleagues have mentioned them as well, that relocating the building towards Hazelden Road, I think D, I, for me, D is the clear winner here. And one of the reasons is it's to your benefit, in my opinion, that when they come in off the access road and they can park on the west side and walk right into the building, I think that's a big deal. And, or if they come in off the sidewalk, off Hazelden Road, across the sidewalk, through the plaza, into your front door, that's important. I also like the visual on the corner, the northwest corner of your building, that hits people as they come either direction on Hazelden Road with the idea that this is, it's something architecturally significant as you're going either eastbound or westbound. You will see that corner and it will look good. And that's important. So I like the way that D looks and the way it functions, understanding that people have to cross the auto bank drive aisle. Make sure that that crosswalk is clearly delineated with some alternative type of material. Put in some pavers or something that clearly delineates that crosswalk for drivers, other than just paint.
Other than striping, sure.
Yeah. Put in some alternative material there.
Yeah.
I think my colleagues have made a good point about, you need to create some better connectivity between D and the promenade. Even if they're coming in and then coming down that long north-south stretch of sidewalk across the auto bank drive aisle, create some better connectivity in there some way, somehow. I'm not put off by the setback at 20 feet from the promenade, but you, you face a distinct issue here that everybody else faces now that, now that we put the promenade in place to benefit businesses and to benefit residents. And that is, you've got to think about your building as having four front doors, whether it has four front doors or not. You've got four front sides to your building. You've got to live with that, and that's going to be more expensive for Think Bank or the owners, they're going to build it, if the Wilsons are going to build it. You've got to fix that east side up so it looks like a front door, even if there isn't a front door there. So you've got to do that with your architectural skills and you've got to do it with landscaping. And you had a little stub sidewalk off the promenade coming in there. You hadn't finished it off to the promenade, but I certainly think that's one way to do it. The problem is, once you come around the corner, you hit the auto, the drive through, and there's no, no way to walk through there unless you create something there. Or you can take them around the north side with the sidewalk where there's plenty of room.
The true link is right here from the promenade here, coming in.
Take them around that side to hit the plaza, which is a nicer way to come in anyway. And then hook them back into the main door that way. So you've got some challenges in design you can overcome, I think, thinking about this as having four front doors. Make sure to, you know, in addressing member Bennett's concern, member Schreik's concern, I think everybody's concerned on the east side, you can move that, that plane in and out a little bit, you know, so that it doesn't, you don't end up having a building on a single plane with windows in it. You get more relief that way, and it's better for you anyway from an architectural standpoint. Lighting for your parking lot, make sure it's downcast. We don't want to intrude any more than necessary on all the residences around there and new residences coming. And I think those were my major comments.
Yes, we will do a photometric chart of the foot candles.
Well, elimination of parking and with a proof of parking, I'm comfortable with that.
Good, good.
Increase, general increase in landscaping. I think, I think that would do it for me in terms of my comments. Member Bennett?
Well, in fact, that is maybe one of the most creative, artful proof of parking designs that I've seen. It's just really nice green space, and yet it can be easily built if you need it.
It does, on option D, it does provide a nice area in the middle that softens some of the pavement around it.
One more comment on that bike parking is, a lot of places are doing sculptural bike racks now. Might be add a nice piece to your development.
Maybe a dog?
I'm not sure how that one would work out, but they, I've seen some pretty, some pretty nice sculptural bike racks to check out. So if it's empty during the winter, you'll at least have a nice piece of sculpture up front.
Yeah, there, Think is really, in everything they do is class act. They, they really look, you know, their mechanical systems in their buildings are top notch, so their employees are comfortable all day long. Their customers are all comfortable. You know, the tile you saw on the exterior is an expensive material. We, you know, brick is a cheaper option, but they felt that would help. The look, the blue that you see on the building is a Luca bond, which is not a cheap material. Even their bike racks has a classy design. From a sculptor standpoint, I'm not sure, but it is, it's a, it's not just the typical bike rack. It is a nice feature. So all these things that everybody's talked about, working with Think, they really do believe in trying to make the, the building, the site, when they will be the owners of this property, of the building. And, and they will do everything to make this a classy location because they're going to be here. They've been here for a long time. They're going to continue to be here. Well, with this one, it's a 40-year ground lease, so it's going to be a long time. You know, so in 40 years, when we're here talking about it, we can discuss how it's going.
The other reason I bring that up is because we approved a expansion at 65th and France and 66th and France, a medical office building and a, and a senior housing. And they both have public art elements included. So I figure with the sculptural art along the promenade, if you did a bike rack sculpture, it'd be a nice play to those considerations.
Or other, or other public sculpture pieces.
Or other public art, yeah, absolutely.
Great, good suggestion.
You know, that's what we were kind of talking about a little bit, and I'm not holding you to this, but when we did the presentation for Spalding, our, our businesses down at 50th and France, they donated the $1,500 that brought three sculptures in this year for viewing for a year. It's $500 per sculpture that the artists are paid. The Fairview Hospital is going to have a sculpture piece out in front that they're bringing in and potentially galleries. So it's something that, just as a city, we've taken a little bit longer look in. And right behind you, there are a couple of sculpture pads that will change periodically. I think Jack, the guitar player, is somewhere right near you. He's kind of cool. So any adoption of public art, we'd appreciate.
Okay.
I think, I think there's a synergy with commerce there too, because art brings people in and makes it more of a place to stay rather than just a go-to.
That's another question, which came to mind when I saw your rendering. Down near the new Veep headquarters, and I don't know if that's like 94th and Lyndale or 94th and...
Bloomington.
In Bloomington? Is there, is that a Think, there's a Think Bank down there possibly? There's a beautiful credit union, no, I guess, I think it's a credit union, not Think Bank.
Near, near 98th and Lyndale or 96th?
No, it's like 94th, 95th and...
That's Richfield Bloomington Credit Union.
That's right.
Yeah.
Our...
And we did that as well.
RBCU.
RBCU, yes.
You did that one. These are going to be comparable materials to what is on the RBCU?
Better.
All right, that's a good looking building. Congratulations.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. And it'll be, yes, it'll be very comparable. And like I said, with that, that clay tile on the exterior is really a classy look on this, for this facility.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Flipson?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. I hope we gave you some good direction between us and the Planning Commission. All right. Next item under the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda is an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Simon Properties, Southdale Center, and Bill Newendorf, our economic development manager, has this matter. Mr. Newendorf, welcome.
Yes, good evening. There's a few different amendments that are all related tonight. The first one is a city council amendment. After this item, there'll be similar amendments posed to the Housing Redevelopment Authority. But these are relatively minor amendments that have to do with the newer improvements over at Southdale Center. In 2012, when the city and the HRA entered into the agreement with the owners of Southdale Mall, we had reached agreement so that the mall would make specific improvements to that property. And in the redevelopment agreement, we identified each of the parcels that make up the mall property. Since that time, One Southdale Place Apartments was approved and is under construction. In order to secure the financing and clean, and clean up some loose ends on the separate apartment building, we need to make some minor changes to the redevelopment agreement. The substance of the agreement remains completely unchanged. So everything that Simon Properties agreed to do, they still agree to do and/or have already finished. The only difference is that now we specifically recognize that there is a apartment complex, One Southdale Place, at the southeast corner, and essentially, we extract the apartment from the obligations of the, of the mall. But there's no, there's no net impact to the city. What was agreed to is still agreed to, and that's what's addressed here in the amendment.
Questions for Mr. Newendorf, member Swenson?
On the page that has pictures of the tracks at Southdale? I'm, there's a tract A, the large one on the east side. And then on the north piece of it, it looks like tract B maybe, or A again? What is that little, so going?
For that one, I'm going to defer to the, to the council of Southdale Mall. Paul, would you be able to address that?
Because for some reason, when we had a discussion about this, these apartment buildings, there was no park dedication fee because they were using a tract of land that they already had. They were just sliding it south. So I see tract A, and now I see this tract B that looks like it has part of A, but it didn't really slide south. It just took a chunk of A, and then we have this new section of B. So what exactly happened?
My name is Paul Mo. I'm counsel for the mall owner, Simon Properties, and I could try to answer that, but I'm having a hard time understanding the question.
Okay.
Maybe it's easier if you could point at the parcels? I guess I can give a quick overview of how this plan...
No, you have a large triangular parcel that is called tract A, even though the center part of your maps also says tract A. So the large triangle on the east side of the property, that one, yes, that you...
That I'm pointing at. Yes, that...
No, no.
No, 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 not that one.
That one that Bill was pointing at.
Okay, yes.
Tract A.
Yes.
Tract B is where the apartments are being built. But my understanding was that it was just A sliding down to be used because we had no park dedication fee. So did it get that new section below where A, the lines for A finish off, is that? Bill, do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I do understand, and I'm looking to Carrie's empty teeth that isn't here tonight.
It looks like, it looks like tract creep to me, if there's a, if there's a technical term for it.
This survey dates back almost a year.
Right.
This was the final survey that was approved. So the, there was a sliding down, so to speak. There was no new parcel that was created, and that might be the distinction between tracks and parcels. But you're right, that was one unique thing about the Southdale Place Apartments, was that they, since they did not subdivide, they just kept the existing number of parcels. There was no park dedication fee required because they did not subdivide.
Yeah, but this tract B is half of A and half of the large part of Southdale, so...
I think this tract B is the one that we approved in conjunction with One Southdale Place.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's the boundaries of One Southdale Place.
And this was the survey that was done to aid us in seeing what the tract would be that, on which the apartments were built.
That's correct.
So there's nothing new here in terms of shifting tract.
That's correct.
Those, those underlying designations, I think they were there before.
That's right.
But that is, that is now tract B, and the rest of it is all tract A.
So you're saying it was more annexation, so to speak? Where, where it increased, you took part of tract B into...
Which I'm fine with because that was already an outlined lot, but they added part of the general part of Southdale to B, but said it was really already an outlined lot, therefore they didn't have to. And yeah, maybe we did approve it a year ago, and then foolish of us to do that, but I just don't really get why.
I don't think it was foolish of us to do that. We, we, this is the, this is the way the survey looked when the application to build the apartments came to us.
There used to be several tracks that comprised Southdale Mall and in several different subdivisions, and they lay on top of each other, if you will. When this plat was approved, if you look at the small print in this area, it identifies all the various tracks that were combined. So we used to have probably five tracks. They're now combined into tract A, registered land survey 1815, and tract B, registered land survey 1815. There were little carve outs for some of the large anchors in the mall that...
Right, Penny's and Dayton's, AKA Macy's, have carve outs.
So there are actually fewer tracks comprising the mall property than there used to be.
Okay, but on this map, there are at least two tract As.
Well, the tract A here, that's simply an underlying reference to an old subdivision that's been platted on top of. It's a reference that surveyors use so that you can see how they fit together, but that's no longer a separate parcel. That's why it's a dashed line.
Oh, so that's part of the big tract day?
Yes.
Capital tract day, that's part of it.
I now understand. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was having a hard time with the question.
Nope, then I'm okay.
Okay.
Want to explain that, then I'm fine, then...
So it's like, it's like the dashed line drawing.
The solid lines are, yeah, you can see the bunnies are all solid.
It's like you laid a piece of paper with the old plan on it, onion skin over the top of the new one, so you could kind of see where the history of things went or came from.
So that, does that mean that little south tract 11 or whatever that is down at the bottom, the little bump that used to have a gas station?
Yes.
Is, because that has a dashed line around it, is that now part of tract A?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that was really the justification for not having the new, you know, it wasn't a new parcel. You could either think of tract A sliding south or this old tract H sliding to the corner.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I also talked to our council upstairs, Jay Lindgren, about this matter, and I said, is there anything here that we need to be concerned about? Have you reviewed all of this, and is it satisfactory to you? And he said, yes. And since he was our lawyer on this matter, I'm assuming he gave it a careful review.
That, that's correct.
So we're not just having to take, Mr. Mo, I'm sure you're an honest guy, but you're the lawyer for Simon, not us.
Staff and our council has looked at this for a couple of months, actually going back and forth, making sure everything looked good. So we're very satisfied.
Member Bennett?
Okay. I just have a few questions about the, the tax implications or the financials of this. Because as I recall, there was a fair amount of discussion during the approval of, of grants or forgivable loan to Simon on the past history with the tax value and the moving forward with it. And I, I have seen the paperwork that's included in this packet. My questions are, how will that assured minimum market value for Southdale continue to be at the current and future anticipated levels without the tract on which the housing was built?
I can answer that unless you'd like to. All right. The, one way to conceptualize the requested amendment is that Southdale used to be, this entire property, obviously before the residential parcel. What the owner of Southdale Mall has agreed is that a smaller tract excluding the residential parcel will still support the same values. So the city, in effect, has, will have an increase in the value of the entire parcel, because the assessment agreement, numbers are not being amended. They simply apply to a slightly smaller parcel, and we have a new assessment for the building going up on track B.
Sure, and where in the papers that are in front of us is that assurance represented?
Well, simply that we have not changed anything other than the legal description. If you read the amendment, it simply says, instead of Southdale being all of this, Southdale now is everything except track B.
Right, but how does that provide an assurance that the valuation is going to be the same or greater?
Because we didn't change the provisions in the assessment agreement that were already established in the spring of 2012.
So the stipulated tax value hasn't changed?
Well, so the minimum may not change. You may be agreeing to the minimum that was set during negotiations, again, for the forgivable loan. But what about the increases? Because, of course, that development of residential housing would have represented a huge increase in value, which is part of what was being sought with that loan in the first place. Was not only a benefit to Simon, but the residual benefit that would occur within the area, which, some of which now has actually occurred on Simon's own property. So how will that increase in value to that property then benefit the property? So in terms of the repayment of the loan, rather than forgiveness of the loan, that increase in value will be seen publicly?
Well, I can give a stab at it, and then you can try to answer that. My sense is that the city is protected because the established minimum values for Southdale as a mall remain the same. And obviously, the benefit of Southdale Mall, I think the value will increase because of the residential development in the corner, as opposed to a generally vacant parking area that it used to be.
But, but the, the value of that tract itself, which was a generally, was vacant parking area, now it has that development. So it would be, it would, if the tract were not pulled out of the development, the agreement, represent a fairly substantial increase in value, I would imagine.
Yeah, I guess my sense is that the value of the mall is large enough that it's increased more by having a, a development here, given the size of that residential development, than having the, included within Southdale Mall, a vacant parking area that was underutilized. But it's a...
I do see that value. I just don't see where it benefits the valuation that we were concerned about. I understand we're protected on the minimum, but we're not seeing the increase in that value. So are, as a, as a community, as a taxing entity, are we going to see that value in another way?
I think that's a better way to put it. We'll see that value in a different way, because I think-
Well, will we? How will we?
Because I think the, I think the apartment building is part of the new TIF district that we formed around Southdale.
That, that's exactly correct. So with this amendment...
We're going to capture that increment off the parking, off the apartment building that we never would have gotten off, off of an empty parking field.
Exactly correct. So with the original agreement, there's an, an assessment agreement that put evaluation on the mall property at about 116 million and change, with a 2% escalator over the next eight years. That same dollar amount will still be the value of the mall, but then in addition to that, rather than a vacant parking lot with a, with a lower valuation, we'll soon have 230-some apartment buildings that will be fully assessed. So that's all new assessment dollars that help boost the tax base for the district, for the TIF district, plus the city, plus the school district, et cetera. What this amendment is doing is extracting the apartment from any agreement with the mall. So the mall still has an agreement with the city to do, you know, to make the, the improvements that they pledged and for our, for our loan. But what it does in addition to that is still open the door. So now the apartment developer builds an apartment, and he is taxed and assessed and served, just like any other property, with no connection to the mall.
Backing up just a second. So you're, we've said that no new parcel's being created, correct?
Correct, no, right, nothing has changed in that regard.
Okay, so then how, how are the apartments going to be taxed separately from Southdale if there's no new parcel?
Well, there's, there is, still is a separate parcel, but it's just not a new parcel. It's been, I mean, there's still, there's still a tax ID number for, for the apartment buildings. There's several tax ID numbers for the mall buildings, so they're still taxed and assessed just as they traditionally would be.
So Southdale used to be comprised of, this was a separate parcel, you know, A was a separate parcel, this kind of triangular shape was a separate parcel. It still has components, but now it has a separate owner for track B, which is responsible for paying the taxes on that parcel. I guess I could also add that when the assessment agreement was first signed, there was a contemplation. At that time, of course, people knew about the proposed residential building, but we didn't have any specifics to it. So there's language in the original assessment agreement saying, at such time as the residential parcel is carved off, then we'll modify this agreement.
I suppose one way you're asking the question, at least to yourself, is are we better or worse off with track B being out of the Southdale Mall agreement? We're losing a corner of a parking lot, and so we lost that theoretical real estate value. But it was replaced with a, an apartment building, or three apartment buildings with over 200 units that'll probably be worth, I don't know, 25, 35 million dollars. Instead of, instead of the value of that portion of Simon's property that was worth a fraction of that.
And in addition to that, the retail valuation will go up because you have adjacent residential, which is what you're saying.
And I see the, I see the increase in value on that location, and I see the synergistic possibility between that development and the value of Southdale. My question more goes to, you know, the protection of the value, and, and the answer that I got on that was pretty clear. And then also to how the city is going to capture or see that increase in value, given the agreements that have already been in place.
Other questions for Mr. Mo or Mr. Newendorf? Mr. Mo, would you tell us what firm you're with and give us your business address, please?
Sure, I'm with Vegri Baker Daniels, and the business address is 90 South 7th Street in Minneapolis.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stand by here, we may need you yet.
Okay, I will.
All right, Member Swenson?
Well, if no one had anything else to say, I was going to move this issue.
Second.
All right. Got a motion, and a second to approve the amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Simon Properties, which is being recommended by staff, and also was approved by our council for this particular matter. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay? Abstention? Did you get an aye?
No.
Did you? Thank you. Carrie. Okay. Correspondence petitions. Assistant Manager Kurt, anything other than what's on the dais this evening, or what's been provided to us prior to the...
Can we ask, can we call her Acting Manager Kurt?
Acting Manager Kurt.
I guess we have probably that kind of...
I don't have anything else, though.
We can give her that kind of title this evening, until he gets back. All right, and then the next matter is receipt of a petition requesting alley paving on Xerxes Avenue. Is there a motion on that? Need a motion to accept the petition?
Second.
So moved and seconded that we received a petition requesting alley paving on Xerxes Avenue for further consideration by staff. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay? Carrie? And then there were some minutes in the packet from the various boards and commissions. And aviation noise update, I'm going to ask Member Bennett about that, and then I've got one brief comment on that as well.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I attended the public input meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee on Tuesday, the 22nd. There were a number of our residents present. Most of the people, who numbered about 50 this time, were new, had not attended one of these meetings previously. And a number spoke, again, from Richfield, Minneapolis, City of Edina, and also City of St. Louis Park. And I don't believe that I have heard someone from St. Louis Park speak at one of these before. I think the concerns in general, they can be put in two categories. One is existing conditions, questions about what has changed, people perceiving more noise, and more overflights and noisier overflights, some lower altitudes. And again, these are folks from outside Edina, as well as the few people from Edina who spoke. And then concerns about what is likely to happen, or what is going to happen, what is the status of the FAA's consideration of RNAV. And then also speaking against the tracking, the tight tracking, and the focus and concentration of overflights over the single, just a few tracks over each community. The next NOK meeting, Noise Oversight Committee itself, meeting is Wednesday, the 20th of November at 1:30 PM. Folks should know that they're always welcome to attend. There is a sign-in sheet where their attendance is noted, if they wish it to be. Printed agenda, and then also some materials on a table outside the door at the MAC offices. There are limits on public speaking during those meetings, and in order to make comment during the meetings, someone has to be sponsored by a member of the Noise Oversight Committee itself. And that nomination or recommendation to speak has to be seconded by another member of the NOK. The intention being that most public comment is sought in the public input meetings, and there'll be another one coming up in a couple of months. The MAC offices, again, for that meeting on November 20th, are 6040, 28th Avenue South in Minneapolis. It's the 28th Avenue exit off Crostown 62. And then I will be attending next Wednesday in Seattle, a meeting of a national policy organization called the National Organization to Ensure a Sound Controlled Environment or Noise. And I'm looking forward to attending that and learning about what is happening nationwide and with policy discussions and formation in Washington. And Member Swenson?
I'll be there.
Good. Thank you. Just one other comment from the mayor. We've been waiting for the FAA to come forth with the results of a study that they've been doing to see if we can do a partial implementation of RNAV here at the MAC, Minneapolis-St. Paul International Airport. That report, I think in people's minds, is somewhat overdue. I'm encouraged by some of the news I'm getting, even though it's, I think, itself generally hopeful that we'll hear within the next two months from the FAA on whether or not they're going to be able to recommend a partial implementation of RNAV here in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. And if there were a partial implementation, it would be with respect to the north-south runway, and I think the southeast runway. Member Bennett will know these numbers, but it's 17 and 25 or 35, I think, heading southeast. And the hope is that if they can do the RNAV on those two runways, leave the westbound runways, the northbound runways, the same, 30 right, 30 left. That we'll be able to discern from a study over time on those other runways where RNAV is implemented, whether or not we'll be able to reach some conclusions as to whether RNAV creates more or less problematic situations for people residing in our community with respect to noise and noise decibels and frequency of that noise. So I think within the next couple of months, we'll be hearing from MAC or the FAA or both with respect to that partial implementation. Member Bennett?
So Mayor, you have not seen or been informed of any preliminary decision or...
No.
Thank you, that's very helpful. There is a group of communities that's also meeting. It's the at-large cities, which number seven, and the six community seats on the Noise Oversight Committee. There have been two meetings so far, and some email exchanges that have come out of that second meeting talk about partial RNAV not being implemented due to safety concerns. But I concur with you that I've seen nothing, and in fact, just have been, the updates that the NOK has been receiving from Metropolitan Airport's commissioned staff is that the matter continues to be under study. So any characterization of the result of that study is premature at this time, and in fact, not based on something that has been released or made available.
That's my understanding as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Mayor and council comments. Member Sprague?
Thank you. Attended a bikeable communities workshop. A lot of our staff were there. Acting city engineer to my right was there, Chad, Mr. Milner. It was a great day of information, and we also did a, a ride in small groups through the city, through some of the existing facilities, which was very eye-opening. I've got to work, some work to do on our sharerows, and, and had some good discussion points about green lanes and how to create more visible, share-the-road markings, but also to balance that with, with the costs for installation and maintenance. During that, we talked about enforcement, engineering, education, encouragement. On education and encouragement, we, we talked about See Safe Smart, which is a, an education campaign. This is an example of one from Rochester, and if you want to go through that. I thought it was a great public outreach campaign piece. And, and I sent this to fellow council members who wanted to share it here as well. And if you can page through a little bit of that, these are some of the images. So what I like about it is it addresses some of the key points of biking and facilities, you know, all, all ages, all abilities. It addresses the school age, safe, you know, active routes to school or safe routes to school. It talks, it, it addresses some images about using a bike as a car and follow the rules of the road. Just a lot of great information and some really tight image, images. So I hope we can adopt something similar. I know staff is working on something like that with a grant through Ship3 Funding that will make this information more visible in our community. In addition, the presenters shared a couple of places online. This is on the MinDOT transportation site, where you can get public information materials. There's a share-the-road brochure right there, and you can click on that. Let's take a look at that. Nice, crisp materials that, that we can have available to people to help them understand, both bikers, how to use, follow the rules of the road, and then, and for cars as well, to be aware of bicyclists and be aware of the, of the state law, laws that pertain. And then there's one more piece they shared, and this is a guide to bicycle laws that law enforcement professionals can hand out. It's a pocket guide, so it's, it's about the size of a credit card, folds up nicely. And in some communities, they have been proactive about getting this, disseminating these small pocket guides to the public. So a lot of great opportunities in the encouragement and education prongs of making it a more bikeable community. We also talked about some events, open streets, which has been discussed here on the dais before, and there may be some funding available for that. And someone even mentioned Ride with the Mayor. So hey, maybe next year, instead of walking, you'll be on your bike.
Could be.
But...
That would be after noonie with the mayor.
But you know, it was, it was a great opportunity to really talk with staff one-on-one and brainstorm, and, and I, I had, I had a good time, and I thought we, we made some headway. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to attend that. And then the other thing that I went to was the CEO Roundtable. I think it was the first annual put on by the Edina Chamber of Commerce. We had five Edina-based CEOs talking about the state of the economy, mainly talking about a regional and state level. But they seemed to be pretty happy with the, the relationships they formed here at the city and, and us being able to help them through regulatory processes when necessary to keep, to keep, keep their operations smooth. And then they cited just the overall strong fundamentals in the region, but some limitations on workforce, and especially in certain fields like technology and so on, where we're going to have to increase our educational programs, especially at the postgraduate level to assist. So that's all I have for tonight.
Very good. Member Swenson?
Well, that was kind of a nice segue into what the mayor and I did last Monday. We went to the annual Greater MSP event down at the Guthrie. And, you know, that's been part of the ITASKA project that we joined four, three years ago?
I think three.
And it turned, it morphed into the Greater MSP, and it, you know, it's great, because they've really culled down to the areas in... really culled down to the areas in our economy that we have strengthened. And, you know, it's food, it's clean water, it's health solutions, and it's business services. But then the part of that that they're now working on is the educational piece and the talent piece, and looking at our demographics and the number of employees we have and figuring out what we need for the future to be able to continue to grow the way we've been growing, and what kind of education they need and what kind of attraction we have to have from outstate because we won't have enough people internally. And it's, it's really neat to see this group working on that and then to hear that Mayor Ryback is going to be working in education as his next job. So it's exciting, and it makes you feel really good, and it was a good evening.
Good. Thanks. Member Bennett?
Thank you. First, some sad news or an announcement. Many of us knew Joellen Dever, and she was a fan of government and the good it could do in society, and there were times when if there was one person in the audience here besides the council, it would be Joellen. Some very late and long meetings and complex issues. And she passed away on October 14th. There will be a memorial service this Thursday at 11 o'clock at Our Lady of Grace with visitation at 10:00 AM and a light lunch to follow. Just wanted to make sure the community knew about that. And a full notice was in the Star Tribune on Sunday, October 20th. Another upcoming community event is that there is a sidewalk information meeting about a sidewalk on West 42nd Street. There are two private schools in the area, Golden Years and Calvin Christian, and then also a park with both softball and baseball playing fields, and a street with a fair amount of traffic on it. There have been efforts over the years to get a sidewalk built on it, and it's coming up this fall for discussion. It will be before us on December 10th. So residents in the area are invited to the Weber Field Warming House on Tuesday, November 12th, anytime between 7:00 to 9:00 AM. Do I have that right? Yes. Okay. 7:00 to 9:00 AM to provide input. No formal presentation, but it is an open house, and people are welcome to come in and take a look at what is being sketched out and give their thoughts. Director Milner, do you have any additions to that?
No, we just felt we didn't notify the people to the west of Grimes and Up, so we thought we'd have a quick another meeting for all those folks to discuss the north side or the south side of 42nd Street for a sidewalk to present at the December 10th public hearing.
Great. Thank you. And finally, I attended in October something that has a return opportunity that doesn't, that doesn't always happen, where something good is brought forward and then you have another opportunity to catch the information. But there is an organization called the Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative that has already opened one supportive housing unit in Minneapolis for homeless young adults in the west metro. They are, by supportive housing, they are meaning assistance in finishing school, guidance on job hunting, job skills, and they've had a great amount of success. They did obtain some funding during the last legislative session and are looking at constructing something along the central light rail in St. Paul. And to share information with the community, they had a breakfast at Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church on Tuesday, October 22nd, and they will be holding a luncheon celebration in downtown Minneapolis coming up, I believe, next Wednesday, the 13th. For more information, I encourage people to call Allison Johnson at 612-804-4766. That number again, 612-804-4766, for Beacon Housing Collaborative. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
I don't have anything. I think whatever I was going to mention has been mentioned, so.
Didn't mention that breakfast tomorrow we're going to attend?
Bold Steps. I was just looking at it here. Bold Steps, it is a gathering of a variety of people, building community one step at a time, one conversation at a time, and it focuses on conflict resolution and building, building community, building consensus.
Thank you. Looking back over the calendar for the last couple of weeks, a few things in there that are interesting. On the 21st of October, I toured the Byerly site with Greg Anderson, who is overseeing all the construction work over there. If you haven't been over there, the parking lot, part of the parking lot is complete, including the heated walkway. It's really well done, and it's real encouraging in terms of seeing what's yet to come. And then, of course, the right-in, right-out is complete for all intents and purposes, and it's coming along nicely.
And they've got the new curb in the middle of Grant's Avenue.
Right. The new turn to the, yep. I did get a concerning email about that the other day, about somebody who said, well, you can't come on 72nd eastbound and turn northbound. But it's specifically designed to just allow people to be safe as they go westbound on The event that Member Bennett attended on the 22nd was one that I was going to try to attend as well and tell. We get a call the day before, for those of us involved in Southwest LRT, to be at the governor's office at 8:00 in the morning on the 22nd. So all the mayors that were on the corridor management committee showed up over there along with some state legislators and city managers. And the real encouraging thing about that particular meeting with the governor was to hear him say that he was very supportive of Southwest LRT and getting that line built. So we just needed to deal with this issue in Minneapolis in terms of potential relocation of freight out of the Kennelworth Corridor someplace other than St. Louis Park, is the way I interpreted it, because we know it's too much of a challenge there. And then the issue of potential adverse environmental impact on the lakes down there, which we have looked at through the Minnehawke Creek Watershed District, but I think Minneapolis wants to take another look at that issue. So that was, that was an encouraging meeting overall, I would say. And then I'm doing a follow-up meeting with the chairs of the House, Senate, and the House and Senate Transportation Committees this week to talk about some of those issues as well. So an interesting lunch I had on the 23rd. It was a guy speaking about seven ways government makes markets or builds markets. And I tried to get ahold of his book and circulate it, but it's the things that you would, you would think, sound transportation, public infrastructure in terms of transportation, public education system, intellectual property protections that, you know, are done on a federal basis, research and development that's government-supported, and some other things as well. But it was interesting to hear this fellow talk about that. Then we had a legislative committee meeting of the MLC on the 24th. We spent a couple hours over there working on that. There's a preliminary draft out. When we get one more draft put together, I'll circulate it to everybody for review. Edina Day of Service was the 26th proverbial highway cleanup for the Rotarians amongst us. And so I had one, I had Ben Martin from Southdale Mall, the guy who runs Southdale Mall down in front of City Hall here, helping me. This is my little cleanup area down here, so we filled up a lot of bags. There's a lot more trash out here than I thought there should have been. And then we had, as Member Sprague said, the CEO Roundtable. I thought that was a very effective event. 125 people there, I think. It seemed like a very participatory audience. Kathy Toonheim of Toonheim Partners was the keynote speaker. Ended up sitting next to her, and as our CEOs were talking, Stuart Henderson in particular from Western National, I said, you better have him come over and talk to the governor about some of these ideas he's got. So I think he's going to be in one of their groups coming up here that go over to meet with the governor about concerns of business, so. And then, Member Brindle, are you going to attend those commuter choice awards on the 6th of November?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Good. Thanks for covering that. That's at the same time as that meeting I have with the representative and the senator. And then, don't forget, folks, the Thursday starts the Edina Film Festival.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
And don't miss the Big Lebowski as the closing film. And there's some other good films along the way, too. But you can put on all your best, you can put on your best Big Lebowski costume and show up there on Saturday night at the Edina Theater.
Call yourself the dude.
The dude.
In the third person, which is the best part of that.
All right. That's it for me. Acting Manager Kurt?
I would just note that City Manager Scott Neal will be back on Wednesday, November 13th, otherwise known as the A-Team, back in service. And I will miss the next council meeting. I'm going to be attending a series of workshops to become certified in public participation, which is in preparation of our, one of our goals for the next two years, to support better communication engagement in our community.
Good. Thank you.
We do have this Metro Transit thing that we got. Has anyone looked at it? Because I know that Mayor, that Member Brindle and I are going to be gone, so it's the-
Oh, I did put that on my calendar.
The expansion of transit service.
Yeah. On Thursday, November 14th, the Southdale Library.
And I don't know if we have anyone else in our community, but I'm going to hand this to you because maybe transportation might be interested in it, too.
Yeah. This would be great to share with both-
Okay. Thank you for sharing that.
Energy and Environment and Transportation Commissions, I think, could benefit.
Yeah, they should know. All right. If we have no business before the council, I will adjourn the council meeting, and then we will reconvene the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. We've got a little bit of work to do there as well. We stand adjourned. Convening the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda attached to the back of the city council agenda on page three. Is there a motion to approve the form of agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion in a second to approve the meeting agenda, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And then we have some minutes to approve from the meeting of September 17th, 2013. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We got a motion in a second. Discussion, all those in favor of adopting those minutes of the HRA meeting of September 17, 2013, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And now, we've got a couple of contractual issues to deal with. First matter.
Here.
Thank you. Here, I've got it. Thanks. We got a change order on the Environmental Services at 3930 West 49 and a half Street. Mr. Newendorf or Mr. Milner, are you taking this? Who's taking this?
I'm on the number five first.
I'm on five. Or I'm on, I'm on agenda item six. Change, or, excuse me, the request for purchase, contract-
I'm on the Edina Realty Building Demolition.
Yeah. Item five, HRA five, which is the proposed approval of the bid from Veetn Company.
Yeah, we opened bids last week for demoing that project, and part of the demolition is also soils remediation in the northeast corner of that site. So I talked to Vite last week, and if it is awarded tonight, they feel like they can bring the building down and do the soils all before Thanksgiving yet. So if all the testing works out, they can get it all done this year yet. But it's going to be timing with how fast they can test those soils and get those results back. So our goal is to get the building down for sure this year, and if we have to, do the soils in the spring. And then, yeah, we recommend awarding it to Vite, Vite and Company.
All right. You had four bidders, it looks like, all qualified in the area, and Vite certainly qualified as well, so. Member Brindle, question?
Have we closed on the purchase of this building yet?
Yeah, we did June 23rd. Was that it?
June what?
We closed on June 27th.
Okay.
27.
All right. All right. Just want to make sure.
I'll move this second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the award of the contract for the Edina Realty Building Demolition Remediation Disposal to Vite and Company, Inc. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Next matter, Mr. Newendorf is taking. I see him rising out here to deal with this environmental issue. Getting the environmental services matter to deal with here. We've had this before, and we've got another one now.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes.
Change order.
To piggyback off of Engineer Milner's comments, in order to move forward expeditiously and to get this done as promptly as we can, we need to extend the contract for buyer engineering. They've helped us out from the beginning, doing the initial due diligence, doing the initial testing, and now they'll also conclude. So as the building goes down and the soils are being excavated, they'll be onsite to do the testing so we can get it turned around in a rapid manner. That does require an extension of their contract to the tune of about 24,500. And just as a reminder, the cost for remediation of the site will be borne by the former property owner. That was part of the negotiated agreement to purchase, was that they would fund the cleanup of the site as we move forward.
Questions for Mr. Newendorf?
I'll move this.
Second.
Got a motion in a second on this matter. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. We, did we set a certain amount of money aside to deal with this off the, at the closing?
We did. When we, at the closing table, we withheld-
125,000 or something like that.
More than that, close to 300,000. I thought it was 280-some thousand dollars, which was the maximum estimate, plus a little bit, just in case there was some unforeseen or uncertain thing. So there's plenty of money that was withheld, so we should be able to move forward and still be protected.
How far have we moved into that, that amount of money? How much of it have we used up?
I've not done a full accounting, but at this point, we are probably into it, well, the total amount for the buyer work is 86,000, and about 60, about 60,000 of that will be reimbursable. So we still have over 200,000 dollars left to cover remediation, and the bid we approved tonight was for 110, so we should come in well below our, our worst-case estimate.
All right. Do you expect this will be the end of the remediation work there?
Unless there's anything unforeseen, but yeah, we've, we've tested once, we've tested twice. The contamination that we found was just, it was limited to one hotspot where there had been a release of dry cleaning fluid back in the late 70s or mid 80s. And so far, with the additional testing, we didn't find anything else or anything suspicious. So I think we should be covered here.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. Last matter before us tonight is identical to the work we did, or the discussion we had earlier as a council on Simon Properties, the amendment to the redevelopment agreement. This has to be approved by both the HRA and the city council. Council's approved it. Any other questions for Mr. Newendorf on the amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Simon Properties? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Simon Properties at the Southdale Center. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Any other work for the HRA? All right. HRA stands adjourned.